Okay, everyone, if I could have everyone's attention, please. Thank you for being patient with us while we got our PowerPoint ready to go. Welcome to the Gilbert Town Council Study Session for May 24, 2022. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and our first item on our agenda is the discussion on the Ocatillo Road Bridge Project. And I see a whole group here ready to present to us. Yes? That's you. Tag your it.
Council members, we appreciate the time this evening with you to speak about the Ocatillo Road Improvements, Greenfield to Higley, or known as the Ocatillo Bridge. A lot of work's been put forth for this project. Excited about where we've been and where we're at, and this presentation tonight is basically exactly that of where we've been, where we are, and kind of where we're going. All right. See. There we go. Okay, so some of the objectives of tonight's presentation is to communicate outreach results to date. So our previous outreach with the survey, all the different groups we've spoken to, the focus groups, the steering committees, all the work that we put forth, all the results to date for that, also the review of the top two aesthetics options from the surveys and what we presented the council, I guess several months ago at this point, narrowing it down to the top two option based off of all the information that we've gathered from the residents, the public, and all the steering committees that we have, and then also we gathered all that input to show you tonight. Okay, just a project overview, just so we, maybe those who maybe not know. So the Ocatillo Bridge is roughly right here across the East Maricopa Floodway. There's four spans of the bridge over Roosevelt Water Conservation District, the Maricopa Floodway, Queen Creek Wash, and the Sanoki Wash, and then tying into the west, I'm sorry, the eastern boundaries of Higley, and then tying back into the western boundaries of Greenfield Road. So that's really where the project is, and it's right over, as you can see, the future Gilbert Regional Park on both sides, on the north and the south side of Gilbert, proposed of the future Gilbert Regional Park. All right, so just to go back to history a little bit, and this goes back, I believe, back to about 2017, the current council members at that point, and then also some committees that we worked with, we came up with a theme, surveys, reaching out to the youth committees and all the different committees in the town, and we came up with the theme of Desert Oasis, and some of the inspirations behind that is water, and as you can see to the right, the application of water since, you know, we are in the desert, we're not wanting to have waterfalls or whatnot running off the bridge. So the applications could be, you know, form liners, some different concrete, the contours of water flow, as you'll see in some of the different aesthetics options tonight. All right, so in-person outreach, just to recap, so internally, we had the, well, we have the Arts Task Force, the Mayor Youth Advisory, the Exec Team, the Parks and Rec Board, Park and Planning Staff and Town Council. Out of that, we received 124 comments basing what you like, what you didn't like, what you want to see, and kind of incorporating that into the overall concepts that you're going to see tonight of what these bridges could look like. Another one is our virtual outreach recap. We have all these different, we have public coordinate, Twitter, Nextdoor, digital media. As we mentioned before, we have surveys that went out to the public, trying to gather as much information as we possibly can to help us to kind of know what the public is, what their thoughts are, what people are thinking, and what we can do to make sure that this bridge is really special for the town. Again, here's our virtual outreach, interacting mapping tool, so you can go on, if you have any kind of mobile device, computer, you can go on there, and you see the little pictures right there over the bridge. You can click on those pictures, it can give you the overlook if you were standing on the bridge at that point, what that could look like. So it's a really neat tool to help you visually see what we're looking at, what the aesthetics is going to look like, what the future park is below, you can see it's outlined there. So a lot of work has been put forth into creating this mapping tool for the public. And here's just another, the project website that we created a landing page for this, so if anybody else has any questions or whatnot, you can come on here and get on the town website. So the survey that we did, this was, this was pretty amazing with digital media, they helped us out tremendously on this, is we did a survey, Facebook, Twitter, all these different mechanisms, and we had over thirty, almost 3,500 participants within that survey, which I believe, if I remember correctly, is the second highest of any survey that we've ever done in the town of Gilbert. So we had an awesome amount of people that were interested that made comments, and Kimberly Horn had the fun time of sifting through all of the comments that came about that and tried to listen to everybody's comments that they made on this project, and not all of them were positive, but we worked through those and tried to, what we created from those suggestions or comments. And then here's some of the outreach results. So you have Palaverdi, the four, at that time, it was four, the survey, there was four different options, was the waterfall, Palaverdi, Water and Stone, and Cascade, and just some of the basic comments of what people were talking, and they kind of categorized these into what you see here from the major comments that we received from the outreach. All right, and I think with that, David, may I turn the time over to you? You're right behind me.
As Ryan mentioned, I'm David Rakowski, I'm with Kimberly Horn. We're the design firm that's working on the project, and I'm project manager. I'm excited to be here tonight because there was, there was so much response. This is, this is an amazing project for the town, and there's just so many different things that you can do. Having, you know, almost 3,500 people respond, the one, you know, we wanted to definitely look at each of those comments and try and figure out, you know, where do we go from here? Palaverdi stuck out as our number one response, very, very cleanly, even in all the focus groups and a lot of the different meetings that we had, Palaverdi was one that kind of rose to the top, and we're going to show you an updated concept of that tonight. When we got to the other three alternatives, we saw a lot of good comments from Water and Stone, Waterfall, and Cascade, and because of those comments, it really made us kind of rethink, are we going to just take the top two and then move on? So we really did our best to try and figure out a way to honor all of those comments and honor everybody's thoughts, and come up with something maybe a little bit new and a little bit different that honors those other three concepts, just to see what we could come up with, and we came up with something that's pretty amazing. So with the outreach that we've done and those comments that you've seen, we're getting ready to start our next round of outreach, which is going to include these top two concepts. It's going to start on May 31, and it's going to run through June 14, and we're going to use all of the different avenues that we've used so far in this next round of outreach. So we're excited to see the responses and to see where we go from here. So with that, I'm going to jump right into the concepts. Palaverdi has undergone a couple of different changes. Some of the, you know, original inspiration for it is, of course, the Palaverdi tree, just some of the lighting that we've seen that could kind of dovetail into what you see in a natural environment. Palaverdi is kind of everywhere, it, you know, thrives in the desert oasis, in and around washes and whatnot, so we're excited to kind of see that, that concept kind of come to life. This concept is almost exactly the same as the last version, except we've separated that pedestrian and bike space. We have a gap between the vehicular area and the pedestrian bike area, and the arches have moved from the outside to the inside into that gap, but largely, it's remained unchanged. We've added some shade structures on either side of the bridge at each of the overlooks to make sure that we looked at that, that was one of the big comments that we had, is that we wanted to make sure that we had some shades, some places to stop on the structure as people were traversing through there. This bridge from down in the park, I think, you know, one of the things that always comes to mind as we're going through this is that we're still early on. Shade structures, you know, some of the textures and stuff that were used, as we get further along in design, we meet with parks, as we really dive into a lot of the details, we're going to be looking at how to do things efficiently, as well as to make sure that it's right for the actual scenario. So keep that in mind as we go through. If there's something that you're like, hey, I don't know about that, bring the comments. We want comments, we're still early, we're at two concepts, and we're going to continue to change as we go through this process. So getting down into the ground level, you'll notice that, you know, underneath the park, you know, underneath the bridge in the park is largely in our visualizations left kind of as a blank canvas, and that's, that's on purpose. We've really been focusing on the structure itself and what the shape of that structure is and the concept as well. As I mentioned earlier, meeting with parks is definitely something that we're going to do as we go forward, as we push forward to our 30% design, which is scheduled for the September timeframe, and some of these things are going to be flushed out, and it's going to start coming to life as far as what we're going to do under the bridge. We want to make sure that we're focusing on the bridge to kind of begin with. Here's that pedestrian and bike space that you can see is separated from the main vehicular area with the columns coming up out of the middle, and it really gets exciting as we get into some of the, you know, the different aspects of each of these concepts where it's a different look, you know, from when you're in a vehicle than when you're actually walking on the pedestrian and bike space. When we get into the night views, one of the things that I definitely want to point out right from the beginning is that the lighting is meant to be very flexible. If it looks too bright, know that we're planning on making sure that we can dim it. These are, these are very realistic renderings, but in no way are they meant to say, hey, this is the final brightness of the lighting. We're still, we're still working through some of those details. As far as how the lighting works, you know, we're still planning on it being colored and to be able to change to different colors depending on what the event is, and we've also talked about different things, like maybe there's a certain time at night where the lighting needs to turn off, you know, the park closes at 10, maybe the lighting of the bridge, you know, turns off at 10, to basically kind of unify that bridge with the park in the area. So just kind of keeping the neighborhood in mind and trying to be flexible, that's, those are all things that we're taking into account as we finish out the design. And here's just another view of Palaverdi at night, just kind of from the ground level, what you'd see maybe from, you know, within the park. Little recap, kind of a side-by-side between day and night, so this is an exciting concept, and I know it's going to get a lot of votes because we got a lot of votes the first time, so it's, it's one of the fan favorites. When we get into our second concept, you'll notice that the name is now Desert Falls. It's not Water and Stone, it's not Cascade, and it's not Waterfall, and that's for a good reason, because all three of those concepts, those original concepts, have been morphed into one concept to take the best from all of them, and to really kind of bring something different to life to hopefully compete with Palaverdi. That was our goal. We wanted to make sure that we had something that was as good and that could directly compete with Palaverdi to make it hard for people to choose, because we really want to know what everybody's favorite is. So our new concept is called Desert Falls, and you'll see a lot of the original pieces from the other concepts, the blue waves from Water and Stone, the towers from Waterfall, the monuments on the abutments and throughout from Cascade. We really tried to incorporate some neat, neat, you know, different aspects of those into this concept, but to keep it simple at the same time, to really, you know, keep it a clean design that can kind of stand the test of time, that doesn't look like it was built in a certain year, it's just something that's going to be kind of timeless when we get done. So we really strive to do that with this concept, and we even dovetailed this as far as the colors into the park. If you look closely, you'd see steel wrapped around the large pillars, that's reminiscent of the monuments of the Gilbert Regional Park. The colors that we used, some of the textures that we used, were always inspired by what we were seeing in and around the park that's out there today. You'll notice that those large towers are hollow, so that, you know, from the vehicular standpoint, you can kind of see through them. We etched a wave into the side of the back of the barrier here to kind of give it that, that flowing feel, but without that in-your-face, you know, blue wave, and just to kind of make it a subtle impression. The, underneath, you can start seeing some of the textures come to life. You can see that etched-in wave behind the Gilbert Regional Park logo, or the actual lettering that's up there. You can see some of the textures that you might find in a flowing stream and some of the rough rock. In the pedestrian and bike space, you can see the shade structures start to come to life. Again, that's one of those things that we're still working through the details on, how high are they, how big are they, you know, exactly how those go together, those are the types of things that we're going to still be working through when we get to the final outcome of each of these concepts. From the vehicular standpoint, you can see that hollow nature. This is one of those pieces, when I asked our landscape architects about it, they said we want to create an experience for the driver as well as an experience for the pedestrian and bike, so that you can see the blue or the whatever color that we're shooting through the towers from a distance, it really kind of gives it that landmark type of feel. When we get into the night view, and I don't know if you noticed this on Palaverdi, but we've really started to think about how we light these structures, trying to use uplighting to make it efficient, to make it easy to maintain, something that we can, you know, continue to light all of the time. We do have other things that we're looking at, for instance, in the towers on this one, we have thought about using a light mesh material to really give it some kind of flash, almost like a glimmering waterfall, but that is something that we're still working on, whether it's a light mesh or if it's a steel mesh that's lit, just to try and kind of, you know, give you an idea of the things that are going through our minds at this point as we approach the final concepts, and getting to, you know, something that, again, is sustainable, something that is easy to maintain, something that's always lit the same, because it's easy to get out there and do things to keep it, you know, as brand-new as we can throughout its entire life. So it's a little bit of side-by-side on Desert Falls. This is our recap, between the day and the night view, kind of from down in the park. And with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions or comments that you all might have on Palaverdi and Desert Falls.
Thank you, David. 3,490 comments is amazing.
It was actually over, I think it was 7,500 comments total?
Oh, total?
It was 3,500 participants.
Oh, participants. The only other thing that I can think of that we've had that many comments is about garbage in Gilbert, because garbage is very important to, and Jen is confirming that. Any comments, questions for David at this time? I don't see any.
Sure, Mayor, I'll say something.
Yes.
I really liked the way you took the other three remaining designs and incorporated the best of each into something that we're calling Desert Falls. Very creative, very creative. I'm impressed. That came out of left field, I didn't think that was going to be an option. My whole life, you get four choices, and you pick one, and then you, you know, you order them into one, two, three, four, and that was just a great, a great idea, and I'm anxious to see what the comments will be on that. I guess, is it possible, is a two-week comment period that we're about to have, starting on May 31 until June 14, is that long enough of a comment period to get a good cross-section of comments from the community?
I believe it is. With the sheer volume of participants in the survey, and the sheer volume of comments that we got throughout, it, you know, it is a pretty long period, and we do reach out to all of the public groups as well, Parks Board and whatnot as well. You know, it kind of trickles off toward the end, and once you advertise it, you know, toward the end, it kind of loses its momentum, so two weeks is about perfect.
Great, thank you very much.
The Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee was very active in this, and we're thrilled to be able to participate, too, and thank you for coming back to visit with them again and getting some more input from them. Any other comments? And I agree with your comments, Councilmember, September, to bring those different items together and to create a second choice, because I think there were pieces of each design that I really liked, and so this was a great way to maybe, and now I'm not sure which one is my favorite, so I have to go back and look at them a little more closely. Yes, thank you. It's a challenge. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember?
Would you mind just repeating how we're going to go out to the public, just so they know?
Yeah, absolutely. So we, one of the big things that we're doing is we're taking all of the email addresses that we got from the survey that was put out the last time, and we're going to email those folks directly and make sure that they're notified that there's another round of social media that's out there. But we are going to be using Nextdoor, the town's Facebook page, and all of the different social media platforms to really get that message out there. And like I said, we're also doing a tour of our different focus groups, being the Parks Board, and some of the executive team and whatnot, and just really trying to get that message out there, because we did get a lot of input, you know, and just to try and reach back to folks. We've even talked to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee to be able to try and get in contact with those participants as well, to, you know, get them back involved and to keep them, because they were a big part of some of the things that we did, especially with the blue waves. That was one of the ones that was surprising us that night. You know, the Water and Stone was really something that they said, hey, that's really neat because it's so different and it's all-encompassing of the whole structure, so it'd be great to, you know, have them involved as well.
I think we could ask you to email my aide Kirsten, and then she would be happy to send that back out to our Maya kids, even though they've already graduated from the program, but they might be excited to be able to participate again. Councilmember Anderson?
Can we make sure that regardless of where they live, county or town, that they're notified in some way?
Absolutely. We do have a mailing list for the area, so we'll definitely reach out to the area as well.
Thank you. Any other? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. You, I think you guys have done a tremendous job, they're beautiful designs. Just curious of any of the public comment, have we run any additional requests for feedback with that as to, you know, costs, or you said, you said "easy to maintain" multiple times, which I think is wonderful, I'd love to hear a little bit more in detail what that means as far as, you know, when we're actually talking about costs.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. You know, when we think about "easy to maintain," it's the surfaces that we use. If we're painting things, if we're texturing things, trying to figure out ways that it's easy for us to fix mishaps, we'll call them, and so those are the types of things that have been going through our mind. As we've been going through and developing each of these alternatives, we're always asking ourselves questions about how can we do this different? How can we do this more efficiently? How can we make sure that it's built efficiently? So all of those pieces, you know, being that we're still at kind of a high level, we haven't drilled down into each individual item yet, but once we get to the final, this, you know, this is the final alternative that we're going to implement, we're going to go through and actually, you know, do an internal value engineering session to see exactly what we can do in order to make it the most efficient as possible, while keeping in mind all of the key aspects from the very beginning of the project when we had a value engineering session about what's, what are the most important parts of the project, being, you know, how it's maintained or how it's constructed, or, you know, just the aesthetics overall. So we're trying to balance all of those different things as we go throughout. So our intent as we go through that process will be to stay true to these concepts as much as possible. You know, as we start figuring out the technical details, things will, no doubt, you know, they will change, they just will, but what you see is what we're striving for in any aspect. It's just a matter of what it's constructed out of. For instance, the arches, we've had a lot of discussions about, is it actually built out of steel, or is it actually a concrete arch? Those are the types of things that we're trying to dial in with our contractor to be able to say, this is the most efficient way to do it, and we still get the same product at the end of the day.
Some of the other things that they discussed was the type of lighting that you use and how easy those lights will be to change in the future. We want to make sure we stay away from things that are too difficult to be changed or very expensive to change out every single time, so that's part of the maintenance in the future, too. So they've been trying to keep an eye on all of that.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, David.
And you also mentioned, I was just kind of, if you had a flavor for some of the comments that you received, not so much on the design elements, but you said you received some negative comments, were they just strictly about the design, or were any of the comments kind of unrelated to the design in general?
You know, we, I think the biggest one that sticks out in my mind was, you know, the biggest negative comments were, "Don't build it." You know, we got a few of those, but, you know, the large majority of comments that we got were all very, very positive, and directing us in good ways, like, "I like the color," or "I don't like the color." "I like the arches," or "The arches are too tall." You know, we were getting some of that on both sides, but largely, the negative comments were very minimal overall, so we were... So we were, we were excited for that, seeing that there was such a positive response to everything that we had proposed. But we, you know, we got the usual suspects of comments, like, you know, "It's too tall" or "It's too bright" or "I don't like the color." But those are all things that we're considering as we move forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks again for having us.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan, too, for your presentation. Next on our agenda this evening is the discussion on the current Colorado River conditions. I'm assuming that's Lauren. Hi, Lauren. That's okay. We appreciate you being here tonight to discuss this very important topic with us.
Okay, so my name's Lauren Hickson, Water Resources Manager. Oh, it's already starting. That's okay. That's okay. What we're about to play is a video from the Arizona Municipal Water Users Association, also known as AMOAH, and this is from the Board of Directors meeting in April. And Gilbert is a member of AMOAH, and Councilmember Anderson serves as our representative on that board. So I just want to read AMOAH's mission statement just for reference, but they work to protect their members' ability to provide assured, safe, and sustainable water supplies to their communities. Working collaboratively, they advocate responsible water stewardship that supports economic prosperity and safeguards Arizona's water supplies for future generations. So this update on the Colorado River is important to Gilbert because Colorado River water makes up about 30% of our water supply, and we wanted to give the full council the ability to get this update since Councilmember Anderson already had that opportunity as his role on the board. So with that, I'll let you watch the nine minutes of this video and then I'll wrap it up after that.
...going to cover today. Clearly, you're all very informed on the current accelerating and developing conditions on the Colorado River. We just wanted to run through some key figures and facts that explain how we got here, what's happening right now. We're going to start with basin conditions where hydrology and the state of the watershed is not in a good situation. That impacts Lake Powell, which, as you know, is reaching critical elevations, which is having a consequence for dam operations. And then Lake Powell's condition is very important for us here in the lower basin as well because that's where water is released to Lake Mead. And Lake Mead's elevation is also declining, and we're approaching tier-three shortage levels. So those are the three areas I'm going to cover, and then Warren will talk about the outlook moving forward. So starting up in our watershed, this is a graph that shows the accumulation of snow in the Colorado River Basin. And you can see that blue line where it peaked at the end of March, and we got about 88% of normal snowpack, which is pretty good. But again, what's happening due to climate change and the...
It's not tracking with the...
Drying soils, higher temperatures.
The video.
We're not getting the same amount of runoff from the same amount of snow.
I'm not seeing the presentation update.
So last year, which is the green line on that chart...
Maybe go back and come forward.
...soils, higher temperatures, we're not getting the same amount of runoff from the same amount of snow. So last year, which is the green line on that chart, we had a similar amount of snow, almost normal, but we only got 36%.
Maybe drag it back and then... We did a test run, right? Then it decides to act up. Okay, that's where... Okay. That's the graph he's talking about.
...reduced runoff. And that lack of runoff in the spring and in the summer is going to impact our reservoirs. Right now, we're looking at the 24-month study for Lake Powell. So you can see on the chart, we show kind of the critical elevations at Lake Powell where the reservoir is operated at. And in that orange area, there are issues with dam operations and power generation when the reservoir levels fall below elevation 3525. And you can see those, the green and red dotted...
I love technology. That's why I'm married to a software engineer. He takes care of me. I even joke with him that he can't handle the remote, but he can do everything, you know, all the electronic stuff, but like, I have to show him how to use the remote. He's a software guy and not a hardware guy.
Want to give you a quick little roadmap of the information we're going to cover today. Clearly, you're all very informed on the lower basin. Drying soils, higher temperatures, we're not getting the same amount of runoff from the same amount of snow. So last year, which is the green line on that chart, we had a similar amount of snow...
Can we just go to the one from the web, from the direct link? We tried to download it and get fancy and then, you know, it backfired. Thank you.
Want to give you a quick little roadmap of the information we're going to cover today. Clearly, you're all very informed on the current accelerating and developing conditions on the Colorado River. We just wanted to run through some key figures and facts that explain how we got here, what's happening right now. We're going to start with basin conditions where hydrology and the state of the watershed is not in a good situation. That impacts Lake Powell, which, as you know, is reaching critical elevations, which is having a consequence for dam operations. And then Lake Powell's condition is very important for us here in the lower basin as well because that's where water is released to Lake Mead. And Lake Mead's elevation is also declining, and we're approaching tier-three shortage levels. So those are the three areas I'm going to cover, and then Warren will talk about the outlook moving forward. So starting up in our watershed, this is a graph that shows the accumulation of snow in the Colorado River Basin. And you can see that blue line where it peaked at the end of March, and we got about 88% of normal snowpack, which is pretty good. But again, what's happening due to climate change and the aridification in our basin, drying soils, higher temperatures, we're not getting the same amount of runoff from the same amount of snow. So last year, which is the green line on that chart, we had a similar amount of snow, almost normal, but we only got 36% of the runoff from nearly 100% of the snow. And that's the challenging and worrisome conditions that we're seeing again this year. Dry soils, hot temperatures, leading to reduced runoff. And that lack of runoff in the spring and in the summer is going to impact our reservoirs. Right now, we're looking at the 24-month study for Lake Powell. So you can see on the chart, we show kind of the critical elevations at Lake Powell where the reservoir is operated at. And in that orange area, there are issues with dam operations and power generation when the reservoir levels fall below elevation 3525. And you can see those, the green and red dotted lines are the projections of Lake Powell's water elevations over the next two years. And you can see that they fall squarely within that concerning area where dam operations and power generation are facing negative consequences. At the current rates, Lake Powell, in fact, is projected to fall below minimum power pool in 2024. And so when we say that, we mean where that red line dips below the dashed power pool line where the dam can no longer generate hydropower. But perhaps something that has been taking more attention and importance right now is that the fact the dam cannot sustain the volume of water releases we need delivered to the lower basin when the reservoir falls to these low levels. So the minimum release from Glen Canyon Dam to Lake Mead in the operating guidelines is 7 million acre feet per year. And as reservoir elevations fall, the dam infrastructure itself is not designed to pass that much water through in these conditions of such low lake levels. That's why, when you read the news and we see what's happening in the current situation, the Department of the Interior is taking emergency steps to, one, send more water into Lake Powell from upstream sources, and two, to leave more water in Lake Powell and defer those releases for now. So they're sending more water to Powell and deferring releases to leave it in the lake to buffer these elevations and try to keep us out of these really low critical thresholds. Those are actions being taken by the Department of the Interior, but also with the cooperation of the seven basin states. So moving on from Lake Powell's situation to Lake Mead, as you can see in the chart, the elevation projections over the next two years, and green is a kind of an average scenario, red is a drier scenario, we are squarely within the tier-two shortage mark at the end of this year, which would be implemented in 2023. So the projections right now are a tier-two shortage in 2023. We also see the potential for Lake Mead to significantly fall to tier-three levels within two years as releases from Lake Powell continue to be low. That's shown in the red projections where the lake falls below that tier-three threshold in 2023, which would thus be implemented the following year in 2024. So again, Lake Mead's levels drop sharply when those releases from upstream are reduced. And the releases from Powell are reduced because of that bad hydrology we spoke about, but also these shortage response measures that are happening throughout the basin. And again, just in general, when we talk about overallocation, we have an imbalance between the amount of supply and demand in the Colorado River system. And it means that more water is being taken out of Mead and the Colorado River than is flowing in on an annual basis. So with that, those are just some of the key highlights of how did we get here and what is the current situation and projection for these reservoirs? And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Warren to talk about next steps.
So we're clearly entering very unprecedented territory. A lot of this, as Patrick walked through, we're seeing that aridification, which is caused by climate change, is accelerating us closer to deeper shortages. The system is very vulnerable after going through two consecutive bad winters. And so we're, it's really happening all at a speed that I think water managers all along the river, including from the federal to the state level, are all trying to quickly grapple with many issues. Clearly, one of the biggest ones that is out there is in regards to the uncertainty at Lake Powell. This is a classic example of seeing, we've heard over the years about the energy-water nexus. Well, it's in full display right now what's happening at Lake Powell. And as Patrick noted, we're really concerned, and one of the key things for the lower basin states is, can Glen Canyon Dam continue to physically release 7 million acre feet to Lake Mead? These conditions that we're seeing throughout the Colorado River Basin is pointing that we will most likely be at a tier-three level in 2024. And one of the things that we've been talking about with your staff is the importance of not just looking at, "Oh, well, next year will we be in a tier-one or a tier-two A, a tier-two B?" What's really important is where are we going to be through the rest of this decade? And it's clear that we're going to be where we have less Colorado River water. And that's a new reality that we will be all having to address. And the more that we can work and talk about that and figure out, okay, how do we deal with having less Colorado River water will be very important. Now, clearly, a task for the federal government as well as the seven basin states is the 2026 reconsultation and what is it that we are, what is the yield of the river that we are willing to live with? How much is it that we can manage? And we've been acting as if there's 15 million acre feet in the river and more, all indications are that probably 11 million acre feet is closer to reality, and many folks are questioning whether that's even too much and that it could be less. So recognizing this new reality, this unprecedented territory that we're going into, we've got to look at moving forward. And clearly, right now, it's important to recognize that all of your water portfolios remain secure. We want to keep it that way. And we just, though, have to recognize and be preparing for an acceleration of getting closer to shortage sooner than we anticipated and also being able to sustain our, to go through a sustained shortage condition.
So we were going to stop it right there since it covers the main content of the presentation and update, and we'll send the link for you all to have, should you want to listen to the rest of the discussion. That was part of that meeting. And really, we wanted to share these updated conditions with you as we look to implement our local shortage plan later this summer. Stage one of our plan focuses largely on education, and so the council and the public will be seeing more messaging regarding that plan to implement the, our local plan through the various social media, et cetera, loader later this, this summer. So with that, I'll open it to any questions from you all.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions? Councilmember Kaprowski.
Hi, Lauren. Thanks for this update. When this is discussed, you know, out in the public, people often ask, "What can I do? What should I do?" Can you help answer that?
Sure. So we already have a very robust conservation program. We provide water audits for our residents as well as commercial businesses, et cetera. And so we really want to educate the public on how to use water as efficiently as possible. A lot of water use outdoors is wasted because things are overwatered, so that's where we like to focus the majority of our messaging. I did bring with me some of our new magnets, how to find and fix water leaks, so that's a really first place to start. And that links directly to some videos that we've created so that individuals can do those water audits themselves and go through it step by step within their home. So that's one major way to start helping to find those leaks within their existing systems.
Do we also work with HOAs and our park districts and Public Works as well for those water leaks?
Yes. So we coordinate a lot internally with those various departments, and then externally with our HOAs. We have a very good landscape water budget program where we work with lots of different, I wish I knew the number, of HOAs within Gilbert to give them a budget for the landscape that they're managing, and then they can track it and view their water use month by month to see if they're staying on budget. And then internally, we're working with Public Works on the AMI conversion, which that allows us, once that goes into effect, we'll be able to track leaks much more regularly and quicker, see those leaks occurring. We're also working on, with our parks, to implement, well, we already have smart controllers at all of our park facilities, so that helps us stay on budget with those programs. We're looking at reducing overseeding, and then we're also looking at removal of non-functional turf, so small strips of grass that are not used for recreational purposes and are difficult to water, to remove those since it's not a useful and efficient way to use water.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember September?
Yeah, it's not a question, but a year ago, I actually had somebody come out from your team, and they did a water assessment at my house, and it was really neat. The first thing they did was we went out to the water meter, popped the cover, they documented where the meter was, where the little meter was reading, and then they said, "Make sure nobody uses water for the next hour while we go through all of the different elements around your home, and that way we'll check it at the end and make sure that you're not leaking water somewhere." It's very common, and if it's happening, you may not even know it. It could be anywhere. It could be under your slab, who knows? And it was a really neat opportunity. They talked about overwatering, which is very common for people to overwater plants, and you think everything is fine because your plants are alive, but you're giving them more water than they need. And so it was just a good, a good opportunity and a good exercise. And so it was just a good opportunity and a good exercise for me to go through at my house, and I highly recommend it.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just a reminder that the overall message in the region... And by the way, it's very important that we do act together as a region on this. It's a regional problem, not just our problem. But the message is still that there's a shortage on the river, but there's not a shortage at the tap. We don't need to panic. Each of the communities in the region have a plan, including Gilbert, and we have a way to address this. You heard Lauren say that actually 30% of our portfolio is Colorado River. There's another 70% that is in pretty good shape. And so our portfolio is still pretty strong. So I think we need to remember that messaging and remember how important it is that we act as a region to address this upcoming problem.
And to remember that we can always be conserving water. It doesn't have to be right now because we know that there's an issue. It should be all the time. I'm the one that's constantly shutting the faucet off while my husband's brushing his teeth. Poor my... My poor husband, he keeps getting thrown under the bus tonight. But it's just little things that you can do in your own home that make a big difference. And the watering especially. We live in the desert. Our plants are used to the desert. They don't need to be overwatered like people think that they need to be. So any other comments or questions for Lauren? Vice Mayor?
Just real quickly, I, you know, one of the greatest... It should be incentive enough for people to, you know, ensure that we have a sustainable water supply. But to Councilman September's point, do we have any calculators for people? If they can go in and say, "Oh, okay, if I do this, I have potential to save X amount of money"?
Yes, we have a water budget calculator on our website. And so you can put in how many people are in your home, how many bathrooms, what type of appliances you have, whether you have a pool. And you can even measure your landscape area, your grass, your turf, your trees, et cetera. And it will show you what you should be using. And then you can compare it to your actual water bill to see if you're not within that budget.
And then just a quick follow-up. I know usage is probably going to go down because it's hot, but we get a lot of activity at our parks. Is there partnership to hand out these things or have booths at all our events?
Yes, we plan to do some more messaging at those events and have these awesome magnets and stickers available to the public so that they know where to find those resources.
Figured you had all your bases covered, but just I'd ask.
I see Lauren everywhere these days, so I think she's every place. I just wanted to point out, too, I had an email from a resident over the weekend that said that he had heard about reclaimed water and was Gilbert using our reclaimed water. And since 1986, Gilbert has been using 100% of its reclaimed water. So when we see HOAs watering, golf courses watering, that's all reclaimed water, right? I can't say everyone, but yes.
A lot of them, yes.
But we're using 100% of our reclaimed water within the town of Gilbert.
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks, Lauren. I don't see any more questions, so thank you. Thanks for the presentation. That is the last item on our study session this evening. So I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and our next meeting will start at 6:30.